Okay, we're gonna call a meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Larson?
Yes.
Malumbi?
Yes.
Jerza?
Yes.
Osterlu?
Yes.
Genslinger?
Yes.
Sonny? Penny?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
We have a quorum.
Okay, uh, declaration of conflicts of interest. Anybody got anything to, uh, declare? See, none approve the agenda. Any additions?
No additions or corrections.
Moved and seconded to approve.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve. All in favor say aye.
No, we have to do roll call for everything. Also make sure you guys' mics are all turned on. The guys on the phone.
Well, mine's green.
Yep, good. Yep, so then we'll start with you, Osterlu.
Yes.
Genslinger?
Yes.
Penny?
Yes.
Jerza?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Malumbi?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Approve the minutes of, uh, previous meeting.
No additions or corrections.
I'll move to approve. Second.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Genslinger?
Yes.
Penny?
Yes.
Osterlu?
Yes.
Jerza?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Malumbi?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Schedule, uh, next meeting, January 24 at 12 noon.
Move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to approve. Roll call, please.
Penny?
Yes.
Genslinger?
Yes.
Osterlu?
Yes.
Jerza?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Malumbi?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Number seven, lot, lot one of Plains Edition in section 23, 103 north, range 6 feet west to the city of Mitchell-Davidson County, South Dakota, as requested by Plains Commerce Bank. What do you got on that?
As most of you are already aware, Plains Commerce Bank purchased the corner of Havens and Burr from Frederickson's. There were three existing parcels on that lot right there. Those will all be vacated. Right now, they are just doing some cleanup work just to make it easier for the future for when they come in for building permits, plan approval, things like that. We have no issues with it from planning and zoning. At building permit time, we'll get an elevation certificate from them at that point. I don't see Jill here at all to talk about it, but we don't have any issues.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
I'll second, this is Larson.
Got a motion and a second to approve. Roll call, please.
Genslinger?
Yes.
Penny?
Yes.
Osterlu?
Yes.
Jerza?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Malumbi?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Number eight, lot of lot five, block one of Woodland Heights First Edition, a subdivision of lot two, Plains Edition, in southeast one quarter of section 24, city of Mitchell, as requested by Ethan Blumberg.
Um, they're finishing up their development down there. Lot five is the last one that will be planted on, uh, Capitol Street. Um, they are working on their elevation certificate right now, and we'll have that before building permit is approved, if it's with the master plan down there. No concerns from planning and zoning.
Move to approve?
Second.
Got a motion and a second to approve. Roll call, please.
Osterlu?
Yes.
Genslinger?
Yes.
Penny?
Yes.
Jerza?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Malumbi?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Number nine, variance for FSST Farms LLC doing business as Native Nations Cannabis, 1620 South Burr, Suite 5. FSST Farms LLC doing business as Native Nations Cannabis has applied for a variance of approximately 16 feet versus 300, as required to be from an educational institute, and a variance of approximately 950 feet versus 1,000, as required to be from another medical cannabis dispensary located at 1620 South Burr, uh, Suite 5. Legally described as lot four of Amaro Regular Track located in the southeast one quarter of section 27, city of Mitchell-Davidson County, said real property and zone highway business
So, the 300 versus, or, excuse me, 1,600 versus the 300 feet, our ordinance states that it does not include public right-of-way. As you can see from the GIS on the screen, it's 16 feet diagonal because there's a small parcellet about, um, the land that they're proposing to put this on. If you were to drive around, it'd be about a mile and a half per road, but our ordinance states, uh, per right-of-way. And then also with the second part of it, um, there has already been one establishment approved, medical cannabis establishment approved, um, a couple of weeks ago. It is 1,116 feet from parcel line to parcel line, but there's one right-of-way in there, so it's 950 feet from excluding the right-of-way. Um, they did not know at the time of the application that the one at the old Runnings Building, uh, had an application in there. They were first in line, so that one was approved. Now we have variances stemming from each of those. We did receive a letter, uh, today from Home Enterprises that I passed out to all of you on the phone, you didn't get it today, but it is from Home that they approved, uh, the variances. We can do the two variances at the time of the vote as two separate votes, if you'd like to do it that way, if you're not going to do them both the same way. Um, the applicant is here, if you have any questions for them at all. Uh, actually, I should also state that one of the letters that you have in front of you, um, is a blanket that didn't really specify to any of them. It's from MacIntees that say they do not approve of any downtown, or the variances should all be disapproved because they think they should stay with the 1,000 foot. It wasn't specified to any of the applications, so that's gonna be brought up at every single
Discussion.
Well, I can tell you where I'm at on this one. Obviously, we have the letter of the ordinance, and we have the intent or the spirit of the ordinance. In this case, I think they're meeting the spirit. Obviously, the letter is short, but I'd be in favor of approving this one, just because I think the intent was to spread these things out. This one is spreading it out. It's plenty distant from an educational institute. Justin, is there a reason we're not doing conditional use on this one? Is it just based on that we're zoned versus the other ones?
Yeah, so this one would be zoned highway business. Uh, the only one that would require a conditional use would be the central business locations.
Well, I don't know, I see that, uh, we're gonna be ending up with, uh, variances throughout. I know it's only so many of them yet, but in the future, there's gonna be variances all around. And with that buffer zone, you know, 'cause I'm sure the council didn't really think of it as being a buffer in the situation of feet and gone towards. So, I mean, to me, it seems like it's plenty far away from the other one, so... So was that a motion to approve?
It's not yet. I kinda wanna hear from everybody before we make that motion, but...
But the thing is, is there's two variances on this one, too, you know? That's another thing that, 'cause we're gonna have to, we're gonna hear it from everybody that, that you approved this, you approved two variances at the same time. So are we gonna set, uh, I don't know, it's, uh...
Anyone else?
I think I'm kinda with the first opinion, that I think the spirit was correct here, and if you actually get out the tape and measure it, although you, you know, you have the right-of-ways and whatnot, they are the right distance. There's only so many places they could go.
Jay, Larry, any comments?
Well, this is Larry, uh, I just wanna say a couple things here. Um, yeah, I've been thinking a lot about this, and, uh, I think these kind of businesses are not, uh, just general, um, open to the public type situation. They're destination type business that someone has a medical card, that's where they're gonna go. And I don't see where location is important to these things in terms of the success of the business. So my gut tells me whatever the ordinance is, um, for, uh, being apart from another business or from an educational institution, I think, uh, I would adhere to that and just say, uh, there are other places, uh, in the city of Mitchell that it would work, where they wouldn't have to get a variance, and that's just kinda my personal opinion. So I'm not in favor of doing variances for any of them, uh, because I think there's opportunities in the Mitch, in the city of Mitchell where they can find a place or build a place where it would comply with, uh, guidelines that the city has already established. That's, that's kinda my thoughts on that.
This is Jay. I would have to agree with Larry on all of his points. Uh, we worked hard on getting those variances and, and keep established. The idea was that, uh, there are plenty of places in Mitchell that meet the requirements, and I'm not in favor of getting any variances at this time.
Any other discussion? Anybody in the audience have anything they'd like to say? Can you state your name?
Hey, bud. Um, good afternoon, everyone. My name is Trey Gillespie. I serve as the Assistant Attorney General for the Flandre-Santis Sioux Tribe. Just a couple of points I wanted to bring up. Gentlemen on the back, you mentioned the spirit of, and the original intent of these zoning regulations, and it's not to be overly restrictive, more so just to control medical dispensaries being in high concentration in these areas. I certainly think we fit within the spirit of the rule. As far as the previous two opinions provided, um, the variance, um, the variance process wouldn't have been put in place with these regulations had it been the original intent to not allow them. So, just wanted to keep that in mind, and I appreciate you guys' time today. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Nick Mosher. I'm an attorney in Yankton, and my client is, is gonna be in the same boat. He's the next one up, and so I think it's relevant to talk on this issue, 'cause I feel like this is definitely gonna impact what happens after. And I guess the one thing that I would just wanna to point out in addition to what's already been said is, if you mapped this out right now with the 1,000 feet from another dispensary, if you took the locations that currently have been approved, and you create a new map using that 1,000 foot, and especially when you don't factor in the distance for the right-of-way, I would submit to this group that there are not going to be five dispensaries in the city of Mitchell. And the city of Mitchell voted to have five dispensaries, and they give you all the discretion to look at what the intent is. They don't wanna have a bunch of these right on top of each other, and that makes perfect sense from a city planning standpoint. But I also think if they wanna achieve their overall goal of having five of these dispensaries, you're gonna have to give some leeway on these variances. Thank you.
I think it's time for motion.
When the city council set the ordinance, was it their intent to cut out Interstate 90?
At the time, we didn't know about the right-of-way. We were never told about the right-of-way. Justin, you could, uh, fill me in on this, but our thing was from a dispensary to a manufacturer, our plant growth, it was gonna be 1,000 feet. Is that correct, Justin?
So, so if you go back to kind of, uh, the initial drafting of the ordinance and all that, we initially chose that because the state has a similar footage requirement in place for other types of institutions, so we borrowed a little bit from that. As far as the right-of-way excluding that from the calculation, we borrowed that from how we calculate other distances for, uh, other zoning matters that we have ongoing right now. So, you kinda borrow a little bit from column A, a little bit from column B, and that's kinda where we ended up with the 1,000 feet, um, and the 300 feet for other institutions, and then the exclusion of the right-of-way. Now, if you wanna get into why they exclude that right-of-way, a lot of the locations around the city, you're talking about more traditional type neighborhoods, and you're talking about smaller 66-feet right-of-ways that you go straight across. You're not talking about 1,000-foot diagonal cut across a gigantic interstate right-of-way. So, I, it's up to this commission to decide whether that is a, a reason to distinguish this type of situation, but I, I think obviously the, the variance process exists for a reason, and it, it's up to the commission to decide whether this is one of those reasons.
I'm at a plan commission meeting in Mitchell.
And yes, like Justin said, it's fair to say that the vast majority of our right-of-ways in town are 66 feet. Um, the only, the only right-of-ways that are not are either old state right-of-ways, uh, basically old state right-of-ways. And then there might be a few other exceptions where there might be a, an 80-foot right-of-way, um, such as, like out on Olmen, so, just for your information.
I, I totally understand Jay and Larry's standpoint on this, that we have ordinance, and the letter says that, we should follow it, but I think this is an outlier that was not expected, and I think it would be appropriate to approve this. So I'm gonna make a motion to approve it as it's been requested.
Is that for both of the variances?
For both.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, I can see that, uh, since it's in the highway business, and it's just basically businesses all around, that now if you're gonna start getting close to residential areas...
The next two are different stories that we'll talk about.
Yes, I know it. So there's a, I'm just saying, or, that's just like Laurie come up and says, but it is the city of Mitchell, and it's not gonna change. It's got the roads the way it's gonna be, so, and, uh, they are pretty good sized right-of-ways, yeah, so, and it pretty much, this one's in the business area, so I'll make the motion, or second this motion.
We got a motion and a second to approve both, uh, variances. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Penny?
Yes.
Genslinger?
Yes.
Osterlu?
Yes.
Jerza?
No.
Larson?
No.
Malumbi?
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right. That took care of, uh, number nine and 10 on the agenda. Number 11, the variance from...
Oh, no, that doesn't take care of number 10. Number 10 will be a separate...
Oh, I'm sorry. Plan approved. Yep. Sorry about that. Uh, plan approval for FSST Farms LLC doing business as Native Nations Cannabis, 1620 South Burr, Suite 5.
So as you know, this is in the highway business, so anytime that there's any changes to business there, has to come in front of planning commission for plan approval. Um, currently, suite number five is an empty, uh, facility, um, so there's been nothing in there, so that's why there's a change to, uh, the use of it. Parking would be the one probably concerned. There are 65 parking spots for that whole location with four extra ones being handicap, um, parking. Um, so, plan approval for the whole place would have been done back when the building was, um, constructed, so all of that would have been looked at at that time. Um, ingress egress, I, aren't any concerns with that. Signage will be approved by me. Um, anything inside will be approved by John for, uh, building permit.
Discussion.
I don't really have a plan to approve. I don't see anything in front of me here, I just see a building.
So are we supposed to approve the building, or no plan, or what?
What are we approving today?
Per ordinance, it's just ingress egress. Um, I'll actually pull it up for you. It, it's nothing with the building permit portion of it.
Just the zoning part of it.
Just the zoning portion of it. Planning commissions shall re, review and approve or disapprove the proposed plan in. If there's any changes, they can come back, but it's actually, owner shall submit to the building official a drawing or drawings showing the exterior views of the building, its position on the property, location and size of the parking areas, plans for ingress and egress from the property onto the street, proposed elevation and drainage plans for the building and a property and proposed landscape. The applicant shall, excuse me, applicant's plan shall demonstrate compatibility with the existing structures and applicable design standards.
All right.
So really, a lot of that would have been taken care of with this.
This is just a formality?
Yep.
Move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to approve. Roll call, please.
Was that, was that for Larson, yep?
Was that a yes or no for plan approval for FSST Farms?
Yes, that's an approval.
Jerza?
Yes.
Osterlu?
Yes.
Genslinger?
Yes.
Penny?
Yes.
Malumbi?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Now to, uh, number 11, a variance for DLJ LLC 501 East June. DLJ LLC has applied for a variance of approximately 448 feet versus 1,000 feet, as required to be from another medical cannabis dispensary located at 501 East June. Legally described as lot S 3A, um, in the reef side of the south of lot S in the northwest quarter of section 27, city of Mitchell, said real property and zone highway business.
Um, so again, we received a blanket letter that was against any of the variances from MacIntees. Um, there was one letter in favor that's in the packet from Patser's, which is across the street from them, um, and it was emailed to Larson and, uh, Jerza, and also provided to you the letter that was from, uh, Lori Coomer and Lee, um, which now owns TK, excuse me, which was now, used to be TK Electric. Um, the concerns that they had about the variance being too close, and then also some parking concerns that can be discussed during the variance, but will be discussed probably more so during the plan approval portion of it. Again, uh, the location at the old Runnings Building was approved at the time of the application. DLJ did not know that there was an application for the Runnings Building. Runnings was approved first, and we have the step-down effect from this again. It would be 867 feet if the right-of-way was included. It's 448 feet without the right-of-way from property line to property line. The application, or, excuse me, the applicant is here, if you have any questions for them or if they'd like to discuss or bring anything up to you.
But, uh... This is Larson. I have a question. What's our distance from the church?
We are over the 300 feet from the church, and that is not including any right-of-ways.
Okay, thank you.
Further discussion? Anyone from the audience?
And I would, I would just add, Nick Mosher from, from Yankton. I would just add on the church issue, if you look at our plan, we will be closed on Sundays, so there won't, the dispensary will not be open on Sundays, and I believe that that church only holds worship services on Sundays, so shouldn't create any issues with the church, and we haven't heard any objection from them at all.
Anyone else?
Good afternoon, commissioners. Doug Daly. I'm an attorney here in Mitchell, and I am appearing on behalf of Lori Coomer and with Phil Lee and his wife. Uh, Lori is the owner of the property to the east of this property that's at issue. Uh, that's the old TK Electric building. It's still being operated as TK Electric, but Phil Lee, uh, who owns, Lee Electric is actually the owner of TK. Uh, they both asked me to submit their disapproval and their objections, which I have presented to the commission in a letter. Basically, to get back to the intent of the zoning requirements, we believe that this does not support that, because the main intent of the zoning requirements is to prevent a concentration of cannabis establishments in one particular area. Uh, this is within the 1,000 feet even with the, I guess, elimination of the right-of-way, and so we believe that this is a direct violation of what the intent of that was. The other issues that we have are concerns by my clients with regard to safety near the area, and we recognize the fact that there are safety requirements that are imposed in the application requirements. Uh, however, given the close location of my clients, we're concerned that the added traffic would cause potential, uh, issues with regard to safety and criminal activity, that type of thing. We also should point out that there has been a clarification. In my letter to you, uh, I advised you that my, it was my client's belief that they owned the entire portion of the... they owned the entire portion of the property that is indicated on the applicant's request for a variance as ingress egress. They actually had that, the pins located today, and that runs right down the middle of that. And so the property line kind of splits that access point there. And so I don't want to mislead the council by relying upon the information that was in my letter. That was just done this morning. And so there is a bit of a, you know, issue with regard to that property, the boundary and the access. I also want to point out the fact that according to the city ordinances, to be able to justify a variance, the applicant has to show that there's a hardship. And I don't believe that that's been done in this case. Just by indicating that they didn't know that there was another cannabis establishment that was with the, within the 1,000 foot setback at the time of their application, there's certainly no indication that there is going to be any kind of a hardship. Frankly, I hate to say it, but their own lack of due diligence, so to speak, had they gotten their application in at the time that there was a request for applications, we wouldn't be here today because they would likely have been approved because there were no other applicants at that time. However, the delay in submitting that caused them to miss out because the ordinances that were passed were passed so that it's a first come, first served basis. You need to get it in in a timely manner to be able to get your spot. And they didn't do that in this case. And so it's our position that we don't believe that there has been a hardship that's been shown. We're asking your consideration to deny their request for a variance.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
Well, again, the intent of the city is that you have five dispensaries and that those be located in a way, in a manner that does not cause clutter, that does not cause them to be on top of each other. Our application is absolutely in the district, right in the zone where these dispensaries are the most appropriately located. And the, the fact that, that there's another application in, again, I think this group needs to use its discretion and look at where those properties are located. You can't even see the other dispensary in question from our, from our location. And if you go to the, to the other dispensary in question, you wouldn't be able to see our location either. You have an entire highway that separates those locations. And so again, I understand why the city gives themselves, you know, this 1,000 foot leeway so that you can evaluate these on a case by case basis and see, does this really violate, you know, the spirit of what we're trying to accomplish, which is we don't want these on top of each other. But if you look at those two locations, I think, I think you'd have to, you'd have to stretch the argument pretty hard to say having a location at Juniper and having a location at the Runnings Building, that that violates what the city was trying to achieve. These are districts where these types of businesses should be. And I understand that we have neighbors and it's a new industry and that, that people, you know, have concern. But when you, I, I don't think it's a full evaluation to say, well, I understand there's some security measures. No, there are incredibly strict regulations and the security that goes into these properties is two, three, four, five, 10 times what you're going to see from any other retail industry. The amount of cameras, the amount of sensors, the amount of vaults and locks that go into this. I mean, you're going to have 24 hour security, 365 days a year. Well, you know, the individuals who take care of the security are going to have access to this property all the time. The Department of Health is actually going to be able to view inside of the dispensary at all times. And so, again, if you do not, no matter what, you're going to be here on variances on this 1,000 foot rule. If it's not us, it's going to be somebody else because it's the only way that you're going to be able to fulfill the five dispensaries.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Further discussion from the commission? If not, we're ready for motion.
Well, this one's a little different story here. See, even though with the right of way and all that, we're still below the 1,000. So we gotta, we gotta hang with that 1,000. You know, otherwise, I know he said that, you know, there's going to be variances like this and that, but, you know, the council set 1,000 for reason. And you're talking 448 feet, not in the right of way. You got 867 feet, including the right of way. So this one, I'm going to have to stick with the council at 1,000 foot on this one. So I'm going to make a motion to deny this one.
Got a motion to deny. Looking for a second.
Before we get a second here, I just had a question for Doug Daly.
Yeah.
What, what was the issue with the ingress egress? I didn't quite.
There, there's like a boundary dispute. My clients were of the impression that the entire area that's used as the driveway was their property. So they actually had the boundary located this morning and it actually splits it right down the middle. So half of the driveway essentially belongs to Lori Coomer and TK Electric and the other half actually belongs to Tom Patzer, who is the owner of the property at question.
So you'd be closer?
No, it's right down the middle. And so we had an objection to utilizing their property to access the, you know, the building there. And so now we're, I guess they're driving right down the middle. So, can I answer your question?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now we're looking for a second.
This is Jerza. I'll second it.
Okay, we got a motion to deny and a second. Roll call please.
Yes.
Penny.
Yes.
Osterloo.
Yes.
Jerza.
Yes.
Larson.
Yes.
Alumbi.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Number 12, plan approval for DLJ LLC 501 East Juniper Avenue.
So again, at the time the building was built, plan approval would have been done for that, for your drainage and any of that. The concern with this would be the parking, the ingress and egress, how many spots that they are going to be required for parking. It's just over 2,160 square feet that they'll be leasing from Patzer's, which it's one parking spot per 500 feet. So it'd be four spots right there and then one for two employees. If they have four employees, it would be six or seven parking spots that they'd have to produce for off-street parking. And that's going to be the biggest concern, especially with the neighbor to the west. If there's parking on the side of the building, is there enough room to be able to get back behind into the rear of the building there for other parking spots for to access the other two suites to the building? Again, applicants here, they have any questions. When you look at this drawing here, all these extra pieces, that's the mechanical that they just took out and set outside the building. So that's actually nothing there. It's just part of the inside, just move outside.
Does it seem appropriate to table this until after city councils made their decision?
I'd refer that to Jessica.
I, I think that that would be a fair action if you, if you wanted to table it. I guess you've also got the potential issue of the parking situation that you could maybe get some more details on as well. So I, I think that would be appropriate if, if you think it's appropriate.
I think there's enough questions out there. If the city council's going to approve it, the parking issue, let's just table this. That's my motion.
Let's get it straight.
Yep, that's my motion.
Second it.
We got a motion and a second to table. Roll call please.
Yes.
Jerza.
Yes.
Larson.
Yep.
Genslinger.
Yes.
Penny.
Yes.
Alumbi.
Yes.
Motion carried to table.
Number 13, conditional use permit. Genesis Farms LLC 106 West Fifth Avenue, District 5. Genesis Farms LLC has applied for a conditional use permit to operate the medical cannabis dispensary located at 106 West Fifth Avenue, legally described as lots 11 and 12, lot 12, Molly's First Edition, city of Mitchell, South Dakota. The central property is owned Central Business District.
As you know, Central Business requires a conditional use for a medical cannabis dispensary. We did receive the blanket letter from McEntee's for not wanting any of them downtown. And then also neighbor to the west, we received a letter from them that they are against it. That would be wisers to the west there. The applicant is here. Do you have any questions for them or if they have any comments that they'd like to make?
Thank you, Mark. Discussion from the commission.
Well, the bigger questions probably coming up after this with the variance request, right?
Yeah, I know.
Variance should be first.
You can't have the variance first because you don't have a building. You have to have a conditional use because otherwise there's no use for it.
I know we can tell them yes and then tell them no right after it, or is that on that work?
Yeah, would improve a business, but maybe not be in the right spot, you know.
And I, I just kind of recommend that you try to keep those issues separate. I know that there's going to be an inclination to kind of discuss, you know, some of the variance aspects of it during the conditional use process, but just remember that you could approve one and not approve of the other. You can approve both. You can disapprove both. And just try to keep the discussion focused on one part at a time.
I see you're waiting patiently.
Brenda Weiser. I have a business right next door and we also own personal property right next door. And with all the empty buildings in Mitchell, I don't see why they want to have one right next to downtown. I don't feel it's a, you know, good for a tourist attraction. I don't really want that next door to my business. You have big friends, little friends right next door. I don't think it's a good place for that, you know. That's just my personal opinion. You have three churches close by, so I would really recommend that you disapprove of this. My opinion.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Good morning. Emmett Reisstrafer from Sioux Falls. If I could take about five minutes just to introduce myself as the applicant and speak to this specific location and our business as a whole. So my company is Genesis Farms. We're based out of Sioux Falls with our corporate office, but our wholesale facility has already been licensed in Box Elder, South Dakota. We believe we are one of the most proactive companies on a statewide basis. We're seeking to have a full, full control of our supply chain from seed to sale with cultivation, manufacturing, and then distribution to about 15 dispensaries across the state. We have some advantages being a, a larger company that has all aspects of the operation under, you know, under one roof essentially or one, one enterprise. Our mission is to work urgently to create the most affordable product possible for the people that benefit from it. And if you kind of look at our story going back to about one year ago, what we've accomplished in that year, we certainly have been working very urgently. We believe we have more licenses than any company in the state. And I, I only highlight that because, you know, I do believe in an equal playing field, but what we can bring to Mitchell, we believe, you know, is a very professional operation, very community oriented operation. Last Friday, I went door to door downtown and had an excellent time. Overwhelming response was business owners and employees downtown wanted us. There are a couple of exceptions, of course. I understand not everybody likes our industry and everyone has different ideas about downtown, but I certainly heard from folks that they thought it was a good thing. Some folks didn't really care one way or the other, but were willing to give us a chance. And I know I didn't ask everyone to come out today, so I'm asking you to take my word for it. But, you know, I know you know people too and have probably heard people that like it and I'm sure some people that don't. Now, why did we choose Fifth and Main? When I look at a map of Mitchell, Fifth and Main, from what I can tell, is about as centrally located as you can get. That means it's more walkable than any of these other locations. It means it's convenient for folks. We're right next to the post office, not far from this city hall, from the corn palace, from multiple banks, where you get your haircut, where you go for lunch. That's something that's important to us from our perspective. We want to conform to the neighborhood aesthetically, how we operate. I brought up my business plan just to at least demonstrate. I know staff has looked through it. The state's looking through it. Don't want to belabor you with everything that's in it, but I just want you to know, you know, the past year I've put my life into this, our team is, is getting bigger and bigger. About 20 people between attorneys and architects and consultants, and we're trying to offer a very professional and robust plan to, to be the role model really is our goal in Mitchell. Now again, back to that location, I believe it's central and convenient. And I do believe with one of the, I agree with one of the previous speakers, you know, if you're going to have five dispensaries, we want them spread out. We're working through the same issue in Sioux Falls. Even after the ordinance passed and after they issued the licenses, they all ended up in southwest Sioux Falls. Now I see here in Mitchell, it seems like everything is near I-90 and Burr. We would be the only one north of Havens. So I just ask you, I know there's maybe some concerns, thoughts about downtown. I met with the Chamber of Commerce, downtown business owners, and I did everything I could to be proactive and talk to folks and really got a positive response. And I'm just at least hoping this conversation can continue to city council so I can continue talking to community members, answering questions. But today I can answer any questions as far as odor control, security, making sure we don't disrupt the quality of life for anyone around us. One more thing I just want to point out, or actually a couple of things. I'll be quick. I think I went over my five minutes. But there are a couple of studies that have come out that have shown dispensaries have either seen no impact on crime or actual decreases in crime in the surrounding areas. I think we all need to be objective. If the study said the opposite, I would be looking at that as well and figuring out why. But generally what we see is when you have a company that has our security protocols, staff with security training, lighting, education for the community, we can actually see decreases in crime. And I think it could improve that corner to have a tenant like us that is professional, is secure, and would be, you know, do everything we can to be good neighbors. So I can send those studies to you if that's ever a question, or you can Google it and find them fairly easily. With churches in particular, I, maybe this is for the next item. I don't mean to get off topic, but with the variants, you know, we're seeing in a lot of cities right now, some are having buffers from churches, some are not. And in Sioux Falls, after we went through this process, the council actually went to amend the ordinance because through the discussion we learned, churches are becoming so more and more integrated into our communities in different ways. And that's a good thing and we support that. But you're seeing churches, there's one in the Western Mall in Sioux Falls, for example. There's one that meets in a bar. There's one that meets in a bar. So, churches are really kind of, you know, bringing their mission to different formats and locations. I think there's a church right in the corner of Fifth and Main. I think that's a great location for them. I think we're also a good neighbor to them, too. You've got bars, restaurants, just such a variety of things that come together downtown. I really don't see the negative, and I think folks that are skeptical in due time might see that we'll do a better job than they might realize. At least that's my goal and my hope, is to win everyone over. I don't want to see neighbors pitted against neighbors, but we'll do the best job we can. And I can answer any questions that you have. So, thank you for your time.
Was this the only spot that you came to Mitchell that you're really interested in, or was there other alternate locations?
You know, there was a few. I think some of them were actually already other applicants. You know, we had looked at some of the same locations that other applicants did, and they either beat us to it or, I can't remember exactly, but I know we did not want to be in that area next to three or four other dispensaries. We'd like to be as spread out as possible. I started looking up North Main. That's a little tougher. Not every landlord wants us as a tenant, so even though there may be spaces available, sometimes they don't even return our calls. It's just too new for them. So, even though your map might look like there's a lot of spaces, I do think it's more limited once you start making calls and looking at what properties are available and what landlords are willing to take us on as a tenant. So, not any specific locations, sir, just in general. This was the one. I know the landlord. We've known each other for 10 years, and she trusts me to do a good job, so she was my first call.
Any other questions of this gentleman?
Well, thank you for your time. I respect whatever decision you make and hope I get to be lucky enough to do business here. Thank you.
Further discussion? Oh, we got another gentleman here.
My name is Bill Parks, and I serve as a pastor at Life Church at Fifth and Main. Been in that location for 30-plus years. We also operate a teen center there that some of you may know about called That Place for Teens. We've been open for about 25 years. And my issue was primarily with number 14, but I thought I might as well get the conversation started at this point. The city council approved an ordinance in which they created buffer zones. I know when you're considering ordinances, there's a lot to think about, and if you thought there was a reason to create such a buffer, I would just ask you to maintain that in this process, the first round of approving licenses and locations for these businesses. I wish Emmett well, and I hope he finds a great location in town. I do hope that it's not at this location, so, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the audience, please? Further discussion with the commission?
Well, I hate to turn away businesses downtown, but this is not a good spot. That's why I asked them if there was any other spots that they could find, you know, it'd be great, but again, you've got that council buffer zone and all that kinds of...
So, I think the question we're looking at for this item is whether or not we want it downtown at all. The conditional use downtown isn't for businesses, right?
Well, yeah, but look at the churches that came in. You've got one that's ill-killed, I believe, you know, so conditional use for having cannabis downtown is going to be tough within the church, right?
Like Justin said, though, I don't think we want to confuse the issue as, you know, if we want it downtown or not. We can talk about the variance in the next item, yeah.
Yeah, I would agree, I think. You have to put the next one off the table.
It's hard.
It's hard to do.
It's very hard to do.
If not, we're ready for a motion.
And I guess I can just kind of clarify my earlier comments, you know? Obviously, all the input that you're getting from the surrounding property owners or operators, whatever it might be, but specifically as to the churches, obviously, they're entitled to give their recommendations or opinions on the business in general. And I'm not saying that those shouldn't be given any weight as to the conditional use side of this, but if you're considering the distance from those churches, then I think you need to kind of isolate that issue and deal with that part as to the variance, so...
This is Larson. I would move to deny the... Yep.
Got a motion to deny. Need a second.
This is Jerza. I'll second.
Got a motion and a second to deny. Roll call, please.
Genslinger.
I'm going to say no.
Osterlu.
I'd like to see the businesses, but just for conditional use, I'll go no.
Jerza.
Yes.
Larson.
Yes.
Alumbi.
No.
Motion denied.
Next...
Whoa, 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 whoa. You made a motion to deny.
Yeah, the motion has been denied, Bill.
Oh, you said the motion to deny.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. I took it the other way.
Did you? Do we need a motion to approve?
No.
If for clarity, you'd like to just make a separate motion to approve, yeah, I assume that the vote's going to be the inverse, but if you want to clean up the record...
I think so, but I think we should clean it up and just do that. So, I'll make that motion to approve the conditional permit.
I'll second it.
Who has a second?
We have a motion and a second to clarify and approve the conditional use. Just to be clear, a yes vote on this approves.
Yes, that's correct. Penny.
Yes.
Genslinger.
Yes.
Osterlu.
Yes.
Jerza.
No.
Larson.
No.
Alumbi.
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right, number 14, variance for Genesis Farms LLC, 106 West Fifth Avenue, has applied for a variance of zero feet versus 300 as required to be from a religious institution located at 106 West Fifth Avenue, described, legally described as lots 11, 12 block 12, Raleigh's First Division, City of Mitchell. Said property is owned central business.
Again, you received a blanket letter that was against downtown dispensaries and approving any variances. Also, we received a letter from Weisers, which is property to the west, that they are against this. The ordinance states that it is 300 feet, not including right-of-way. Currently, it's 101 feet from property line to property line. It'd be zero feet, not including any of the right-of-way. Applicant is here. Do you have any questions for them at all?
So, this is where I talk about spirit of the ordinance, right? And, you know, with that church being there for 25 years, I don't think this even meets the spirit of the ordinance, so while I'm happy to see him come to town, this is not the location. I'd be against this.
I agree.
Yeah, so I'm going to make that a motion. Motion to deny.
We got a motion. Anybody from the audience want to comment on this, please?
I'll be quick, right? Thank you.
Again, Emmett Reisstrafer, and appreciate your time and definitely understand everyone's viewpoints. Just want to add a couple quick things. We will also be closed on Sundays. We plan to close every day at 8:00 PM, but also for the first six months, we're going to be looking at the number of patients that are even eligible in the community. There's a good chance we could be open on appointment-only basis if there's such few patients. It takes time for these programs to kind of build up as people have these conversations with their doctors, so I think it's going to be a very slow traffic area. So, at least if you wanted to see and give us a shot first before you deny us, give us, you know, six to 12 months to see how this business impacts the area, I'm confident I will have a lot of support in the community, you know, once we have a chance to get up and running. I know it's kind of chicken and the egg, and again, I respect your viewpoints and decision today, but if you were to give me a shot, I think I'd come back with a lot of support. Also, just to note, the dispensary will not have any type of marketing on the exterior that indicates even the type of business we are. It'll just simply say Genesis Farms. There's no Cannabis Leaf, there's no Green Cross, there's no artwork or anything like that proposed. So, my hope with that is that people who, you know, maybe don't want us there, at least you really don't even know we're there unless you come and knock on our door and come in and find out. It's pretty discreet on the outside. So, I'm just hoping you'll think about that. Closed on Sunday, possibility of being very limited on hours with such few patients, and we're just looking for a shot to see if, you know, we can do a good job in Mitchell and get more support. And I'd really like to have this conversation with council, too, is my hope, that maybe tabling's an option to let other city leaders weigh in. I can keep talking to neighbors, but if not, I understand and appreciate your time and can answer any questions.
Will this go to the city council to get it away, right?
Yeah. For all of the applicants that have been here today, this board makes a recommendation to Board of Adjustment, so everything, whether it was recommended denial or approval, will be heard on January 18th at 6:00 PM by Board of Adjustment.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else from the audience?
Good afternoon. My name is Nathan Weber, and I'm here to speak in opposition to the variance, and I want to make it very clear that my opposition is not related to the applicant but to the location. I think we've had other people up here talk about, you know, a variety of topics that I think pertain to this as well. The fact that the ordinance was put in place for a reason, with these buffers for a reason. Obviously, the reason we have the request for variance is because it is too close to not just one church but two churches. There's another church directly south of this location, Eglise Christiana, that is in operation, that should be pointed out. The pastor indicate that the Word of Life Church also has That Place for Teens, which serves youth from 7th through 12th grade. And another thing I wanted to point out was the fact that Big Friend Little Friend would be located right next door to this proposed location. And for those of you who aren't familiar with this, this is a youth mentorship program, a nonprofit that administers service to at-risk youth, and these are some of the most vulnerable members of our community, and I think we need to take that into account as well, that, you know, these kids, you know, whether we're talking about via churches, whether we'd be talking about outside of church programs like That Place for Teens, whether we'd be talking about the Big Friend Little Friend kids, you know, it's a vulnerable portion of our population, and I ask you to deny this request for the variance. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I wasn't going to say anything. I'm Tara Woleski, and I own the building, and I did talk to Big Friend Little Friend, and, you know, sat down and visited with them. And I look at it like this. You know, you go to the grocery store, you take your kids out there, they, you know, prescribe drugs out there, medicine, and they sell alcohol. So, I look at this as a medicine shop where you have to have a card from the doctor, you know, before you can go in that building, you have to have a prescription from a doctor. So, what are we going to deny? People, you know, prescription drugs or prescription marijuana when they're maybe trying to get off opioids? I know a lot of people that want, I mean, I got a lot of calls from veterans that they're shamed right now because, oh, my gosh, you know, marijuana, that's horrible, but yet they're hooked on, you know, pain medication. And this is something between the doctor and the patient. And I understand, you know, the neighbors maybe have an issue with it, but do you have an issue with all the bars downtown and all the people that get drunk? In fact, I was just down at my place yesterday moving some things in, and there was a drug, a meth or a drug deal taken right in front of the scissor cut. So, I want it because we'll have the best security in town, and you'll be able to see all the way down the block, across the street, everything that goes on, and the police station will be able to see it, too, won't they, Emmett? Or Department of Health. So, I want this as a safety measure because right now, that corner is not real safe. Thank you.
Further discussion?
Yes. I'd like to address the situation. I don't have a problem with Genesis Farms whatsoever.
What's your name? Name, please.
John Weiser. We own the property right down the street. I don't have a problem with Genesis Farms. There's other locations in town. We don't need that on Main Street. That's my thought. You got it on Main Street, you got bars and everything else. Also, with Mr. Parks, with the church, with the religious foundation, you got the corn palace, you got family. This is a big family town, you know, by approving this, I think Mitchell would be making a grave mistake. Like I say, there's other locations I don't disapprove of what they're trying to do, but the location, I'm not happy with the location. That's it.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else from the audience? Further discussion here? We have a motion, and that motion is to deny. Looking for a second.
Larson will second.
Got a motion and a second to deny the variance. Roll call.
Osterlu.
Yes.
Genslinger.
Yes.
Penny.
Yes.
Jerza.
Yes.
Larson.
Yes.
Alumbi.
Yes.
Motion carried to deny the variance.
Number 15, other business. Anything else?
No.
Number 16, public input. If you need to address the planning commission on an item that was not on the agenda, excluding personnel items, please come forward to the podium, state your name and your concern. Presentations are limited to three minutes. Items will be considered, but no action will be taken at this time. Seeing none, we are dismissed.
Thanks, Larry. Thanks, Jay.